Let's call the meeting to order and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Ms. Dunn.
Honorable Mayor Ron Schaver.
Here.
House Member Dan Marler.
Here.
Doug Sauschow.
Here.
Allison Howe.
Present.
Glenn Anderson.
Here.
Lisa Northrup.
Here.
Kevin Lindell.
I'm here.
First item on our agenda is approval of the minutes from our June, July 17, 2018 council meeting. Ms. Dunn.
There's a draft copy that's been included in your packet and submitted for resolution.
Everybody reviewed and are there any questions or revisions? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution approving the minutes from the July 17, 2018 city council meeting.
Second.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
The next item is council acting as liquor licensing authority. This is a public hearing before the city council of the city of Fort Morgan, acting as a liquor licensing authority for the city to determine whether the application for a retail 3.2 FMB license off-premise by Pester Marketing Company doing business as Alta #6145 at 825 Main Street should be granted or denied. This hearing will be conducted pursuant to the laws of the state of Colorado and the ordinances and procedures of the city of Fort Morgan. The purpose of this hearing is to receive information, data, and testimony by any interested parties in order to enable the city to make findings and reach conclusions required to be made by state law as to whether or not the applicant should be approved or denied. One of the principal questions the council will be concerned with throughout this hearing relates to the reasonable requirements of the neighborhood for the outlet applied for and the desires of the inhabitants of that neighborhood with respect to the license. Those persons who will be heard during this hearing are the parties of interest, who are defined by state law as being the applicant, residents of the neighborhood, owners or managers of business located in the neighborhood. The council has previously set the boundaries of the neighborhood for all city liquor licenses as the entire city. Does anyone present, present, object to the boundaries of the neighborhood? Seeing none. Are there any disclosures from the council members?
Did you?
I did.
Okay. If you want to go to legal notice, we can probably...
Was it properly noticed, Ms. Dunn?
A legal notice was, of this public hearing, appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on July 20.
Okay. Presentation, Mr. Brennan.
Okay. This is a new retail FMB, which is the state liquor's new way of referring to 3.2 beer, fermented malt beverage, it's now called. We actually received this application in, on June 6, that was reviewed by my office, the city attorney's office, and the Fort Morgan Police, and it was deemed to be complete. The council accepted the application on June 19 and set this public hearing for tonight. Legal notice was published in the newspaper, posted on the property, and that information is in your packet. This location is at 825 Main Street. It used to be known as Western Gas, I think, and now is, the applicant is Pester Marketing Company, I think that's how it's pronounced, DBA Alta 6145, I think that's how that's pronounced, but I'm not sure on either one. We do have some representatives from the applicant who will be able to answer those questions and any others you may have. As Ron referred to in the script, the burden is on the applicant to prove the needs and desires of the residents of the neighborhood, which is the entire city, for issuance of this license. Easiest way to do that, although it's not required, is by petitioning. This company is a large company that has, I think, it's got to be 30 or more liquor licenses in Colorado. It was one of the more professional applications I've ever received. They, I believe, hired an outside company to do the petitioning. They submitted a total of 184 signatures, of which six had to be disqualified because they were not of age or not owners of a business. There's no minimum number of signatures required. It's kind of the more the better, but you don't have to hit a target. We have not received any written or verbal comments either for or against this license. The police department posted notice on the property of this hearing and the application for the new license that was posted for at least 10 days. The, because this company has so many liquor licenses in Colorado, they have a master file with the state liquor enforcement division, so all the fingerprint background checks for all the corporate officers are held there, so we didn't have to go through that. Once the, if the application is approved, the police department would inspect the premises for, you know, compliance. And the city attorney will give you advice on, you know, direction on your options for action. So, the staff recommendation is to weigh the evidence presented at the hearing and make an objective decision on this application for a new retail 3.2% FMB license off-premise for Pester Marketing Company, DBA Alta 6145 at 825 Main Street.
Okay. Next, we'll hear comments from the applicant, if any. Does the applicant wish to address the council?
I don't have any comments. I'm sorry.
If you wouldn't mind signing in, there's a little sign-in sheet there, if you wouldn't mind. Yeah, and then...
And if there is any testimony, it'll be sworn in by the city clerk.
Can you raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Excuse me. Thank you for your time, mayor and council members. My name is Anita Gregg, and I'm the Corporate Compliance Administrator for, it's Pester Marketing Company, the Alta Convenience Stores. Pester Marketing Company has 108 locations. We're in four states, New Mexico, Kansas, Nebraska, and a majority of our stores are here in Colorado. And we currently hold 40 beer licenses in the state of Colorado, and then we also have liquor licenses within the other states. So, I am open for any questions or what else you might need to know.
Does anybody on council have any questions?
I do have one question, and I'm sure you can answer this pretty simply. You, listed in here, you had some beer violation suspensions. Can you explain, obviously, as a liquor licensing authority, we take it very seriously, and we're very concerned, especially when it has to do with underage purchasing. Can you talk a little bit about what your company does to ensure that you're not out of compliance?
Out of compliance, sure. We have several training programs. We've got the CBT training program, which is a computer-based training program, where before employees are allowed to work on the sales floor, when there's a beer license in place, they have to go through that training and pass that. We are also a member of the bars program, where we get mystery shops. They come out, they shop, they see if you follow the laws and the carding. If you do it correctly, you get your green card, and if you do it incorrectly, you then are red-carded, and then we take disciplinary action at that time. We also are part of the tips program, and then, and it's just constant, you know, the training and the reiterating of the rules and regulations that they need to be doing. We also have the calendar at the register that says, you know, out front, this is the date that they have to have their birth in order to sell, so everything, and then the registers as well, so that they know for birth, easy birth date. They don't have to do any math. Okay? Congratulations. Thank you.
Any other questions for Ms. Gregg? Next, we have public comments. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this issue? There are none. I would ask the city clerk if there have been any oral or written comments submitted to your office prior to this hearing.
None were received.
Now proceed to council discussion. Is there any questions or discussion in council? There's no further discussion. I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
A motion by Lisa Northrup, and a second by Dan Marler. All in favor?
Aye.
Post and sign. Motion carries. Council action, Mr. Myers.
All right. Council's got a few options. You can approve if you believe that the needs and desires, as provided, have been met, then you should vote to approve the license. If you believe that it has not been met, you should approve, or vote to not approve. If you feel you need additional information, you can continue the issue to a later date, and we can reopen the public hearing if necessary.
Okay. I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution approving an application for a new 3.2% beer FMB license off-premise for a Pester Marketing Company doing business as Alta #6145 located at 825 Main Street.
Second it.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Doug Sauschow. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thanks for asking how to say that. Thanks for asking.
Next on the agenda is a public hearing to consider an application for a variance from parking regulations.
I think that must be the wrong script. This is a variance from setback requirements for Riverview Commons. I apologize. But it's the same script, it's just the wrong topic.
Same script, just got the wrong topic for the zoning board of appeals for Riverview Commons. So, this is an agenda for a hearing to consider a zoning variance for setbacks for the Riverview Commons area. And the council will be acting in its capacity as a zoning board of appeals. This is a public hearing. Please keep public comments to the issues before the council. Each speaker is asked to limit comment time to three minutes unless a speaker represents a group of citizens, in which event additional time may be allocated. Please respect these limitations, and I reserve the right to limit public comment that is inappropriate under these guidelines or otherwise improper. I also reserve the right to limit testimony or questioning that is repetitive, cumulative, argumentative, and not pertinent to the issues, and to set a limit in the duration of testimony, and if I determine it to be necessary in the light of a number of persons who have signed up to testify. First is a legal notice. Ms. Dunn, has the hearing been properly noticed?
A legal notice of this public hearing appeared in the Fort Morgan Times on July 20.
Next is the presentation of the application. Mr. Gleymer.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, mayor and council. What you have before you is case number 18-019VA. This is a variance to the setback of the PUD that was approved some time ago for Riverview Commons. And more specifically, at 1507 Canal Street, the PUD requires five-foot side setbacks for those lots that are not utilizing the zero lot line. Some of the lots were allowed to have garages that basically the walls touch each other, but in this case, 1507 Canal is not one of those lots and was required to have a five-foot setback from the, from the property line. This allows the homes to be set 10 feet apart so that they meet the building code requirements that, that are in the code as well. After the developer started construction on the home and the foundation of the garage, it was determined that one of the property pins, well, several of the property pins actually were in the wrong spot. They had their surveyor come out and check the location of those pins, and we're not exactly sure why they were not, according to the plat at the time. You know, we were looking at the foundation setbacks, but they're not. They are now, and you have a letter in your packet from the surveyor. He felt that maybe they'd gotten moved during some utility work. You know, I can't confirm or deny why they're, they were off, but they were. So, subsequent to that, we've had a, a foundation actually set in the ground, concrete poured, and it's only just over two feet from the property line, not five, as it should be. This is pretty significant to the developer. They've spent a lot of money putting this concrete in the ground, and I think if there's ever a variance that staff can support, it's this case in particular. They didn't know this was the case. These things are difficult to determine. Our building official and inspectors go out and base their decisions based on property pins that are set in the ground by licensed surveyors, so hard to say why this happened. We've corrected the situation so that we, we don't have any other structures that'll need a variance to this side setback issue, but this one in particular, since they've already expended quite a bit of money and time building the foundation for the garage, staff fully supports that we would approve this variance tonight and allow these folks to continue building this, this one house and garage in particular. You have the criteria in your packet that you would look at to approve or deny a variance from the code. We did, have not received any comments on this issue for or against. So, staff is recommending that the city council acting as the board of appeals would approve case 18-019VA for 1507 Canal Street, which is a variance to the side setback specified in the approved PUD, and that we would, if you do approve that, that the condition, that the variance would run in perpetuity with the land. Obviously, the house will be there, hopefully, forever, so, and that it would run with the land and the lot in question. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have on this issue.
So, this only affects the one lot?
It does. Yep.
No answer to why, how the property pin got relocated?
Yeah, it's just hard to know. I, I don't understand. It was off quite a ways, so...
Yeah.
So, Steve, with the condition that the variance runs in perpetuity with the land and lot, so if, like, they sell the land, then it goes away?
No, no, no. It runs with the land, so...
Perpetuates forever.
Well, yeah, I'm just...
Irregardless of ownership.
If the new owner wants to do something else, they just get a new permit to rezone? Or what happens if someone else purchases the property? And I'm just...
Well, the structure will be there, so I guess it's conceivable that somebody could demolish the structure that's there and build it back in that same location, but we would probably look to rectify the situation if somebody demolished the, the structure, but I, I can't conceivably believe that would happen, I don't know, in probably a couple of lifetimes. I mean, these structures, you know, tend to exist for a very long time, so...
Thank you.
It's a good question, though.
Steve, we talking like two feet difference?
Yeah, we're talking three feet, a variance of three feet. It's, it's about two feet off the property line, should be five, so...
Does that affect anything with the fire, Cubsy?
No, we'll have that approval, and so anybody will see that and know that it was allowed per this variance from, you know, variance from our code, so it shouldn't affect any issue with the buying and selling of the property now or in the future.
Okay.
Would be a lot to ask, to have them completely tear out in a completed foundation and repour a foundation for a couple of feet.
Well, and as I read the packet, it's not just that as well. I mean, they'd have to move the garage, and they've already got siding on the house, and it'd be a huge...
Yeah, this would be a very burdensome and onerous issue if, if it wasn't approved. They would certainly have to expend a lot more money and time to move the structure and cha, they would change the entire, they're tight anyway, these, these houses and garages as they exist. They are very, very tight to the property lines, so they'd have to change the entire composition of this lot from what they have contemplated for many of the lots in this subdivision, so. There is a representative for the owner applicant here tonight, if you had questions of them as well, so...
We'll get to that one. Kind of out of their control, they didn't set the property pins.
Yeah. Staff agrees.
It's an after-the-fact point, so... Does anybody else have any other questions for Mr. Gleymer?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks, Steve. Next, we'll hear comments from the applicant, if any. Do you wish to address council? Not a public speaker.
Bless your maker.
Does council have any questions for the applicant? Next, we'll hear public, public comment. Is there anybody who wishes to speak to this Seeing none, I would ask the city clerk if any oral or written comments were submitted to the clerk's office prior to this meeting.
None were received.
Proceed to council discussion. Are there any questions or discussion of council? There are none, I would entertain a motion to close or continue the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion to close the public hearing by Lisa Northrup, a second by Dan Marler. All in favor?
Aye.
Council action, Mr. Myers.
All right, so section 20-3-150 of the code is what you are going to be looking at, the legal standard. It was provided to you in your memo. If you believe that this application meets those criterias, then you should approve the variance. If you believe that one of those, one or more of those criteria have not been met, then you should vote to not approve the variance. You can always ask for a continuance if you'd like to set this over for a later date for more information.
Would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I'd offer a resolution to approve case 18-019VA for 1507 Canal Street for this variance to the side setback specified in the approved development agreement with the following condition, that this runs in perpetuity with the land and lot.
Second.
Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously.
Next is presentation of possible action on bids for a police patrol vehicle. Commander Crowe.
Evening, mayor and council. Have before you a request to replace a police patrol vehicle. Earlier this year, a 2016 Ford Utility Insept was damaged during routine patrol. This is one of the vehicles, and it was involved in a semi incident that we had earlier. The vehicle was struck by a semi and sustained severe damage and beyond repair, since it was totaled by certain insurance company. The request is going to be from a funding source of reserves of $29,833. $28,900 either has been or is going to be received... Twenty-eight thousand nine hundred dollars either has been or is going to be received from SIRS based on the other, the coverage and so on and so forth for the damage and any other replacement of equipment and so on. Right now, we can take all the old equipment out of the vehicle, but there's still some other costs that's going to come up later on. The expectation is that we have our operating and operations and maintenance budget, which is our regular budget, that we'll take the money out of that. It's not going to be a significant amount. The invitation for bid was advertised on the City of Fort Morgan webpage for approximately three weeks beginning in July. We received only one bid. That was from Spradley Bar Ford. They bid on a twenty nineteen Ford Intercept utility. Again, the cost, twenty-nine thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars. Legal review prior to the bid was done by the city attorney's office and approved by city attorney's office. Staff recommendations recommend that counsel accept the bid from Spradley Bar. We have Greed Colorado to purchase one Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicle for twenty-nine thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars from reserves. Barring that, anybody have any questions?
Are we able to use any of the equipment?
Yeah, virtually all the equipment, but there's graphics that have to go on the vehicle. That's going to be additional cost, but any other external equipment, which is typically just a light bar, that can be, is still workable. But there's some other wiring, different things like that that you can't pull out, but you have to replace. My expectation is going to be under five thousand dollars to do that and that can be absorbed in our regular budget.
So in reality, it's about a thousand dollars after the insurance piece?
It's going to be a little bit more than that with the actual cost. That thousand dollars just to purchase a vehicle, but we still have to outfit it, meaning we have to put in the equipment from the old vehicle. So we're estimating expectation probably six thousand or less total out of reserves with upfitting it and the purchase of the vehicle ideally.
And that's included in the twenty-nine thousand?
No, the twenty-nine thousand is just out of reserves for the purchase of the vehicle.
Okay, so.
The upfitting is going to come from money that's already here for twenty eighteen.
Okay, so you won't have to, I was just thinking, you wouldn't have to come back again to ask for the upfitting normally that we put that in the bid, so.
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions? Seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I offer a resolution to accept the bid from Spradley Bar Ford of Greeley for one Ford Police Interceptor utility vehicle, vehicle for twenty-nine thousand eight hundred thirty-three dollars.
Second.
Have a resolution by Allison Howe, a second by Lisa Northrup. Vote by roll call.
That resolution carries unanimously?
Thanks.
Next is presentation on possible action authorizing the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with Morgan County Clerk and Recorder for participation in the November general election. Mr. Brennan.
Thank you, Your Honor. This is a pretty routine resolution that we normally do every other year in odd-numbered years for city council elections. In this case, we're doing it for the proposed charter change ballot question. It basically just says we'll participate in the coordinated election conducted by the Morgan County Clerk, follow the rules of that instead of the municipal election code, certify the ballot content by a certain date, and, you know, follow all of their direction. So it's just something we need to get back to them within the next few weeks and then certify the ballot content.
Any questions? I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign an intergovernmental agreement with the Morgan County Clerk and Recorder for participation in the November general election. Second.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup and a second by Allison Howe. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously?
Next is presentation on authorizing the mayor to execute a contract and closing documents for the purchase of property. Mr. Nation.
Good evening, everybody. First of all, let me apologize for this just being in your guys' table file. As you guys are aware, we've had this discussion about this piece of property before an executive session and we had the opportunity, basically sprung on us since the last council meeting. And so we had to, I had to act last week on this and try to see if we could get this in front of you. So first of all, I apologize for not having all this in front of you so you could read it in advance. But this is for the potential purchase of the ground that basically is everything between Center Point Plaza and the existing industrial park. There's approximately one hundred and thirty-five acres there and the contract that you see in front of you is a draft that Jason's office has put together with the information from the seller that we were able to get in front of him as he was returning from vacation along with a couple of other people at the city. So we had a little bit of fun with vacation schedules last week, but I appreciate everybody's help that I got yesterday in making sure that we could do this. The contract is between the City of Fort Morgan and Fort Morgan Farms, the same party that we bought Center Point Plaza from. And so it was fairly simple putting the contract together. It is for approximately one hundred and thirty-five acres. There's two farmhouses out there on that that will come with the property. And more exciting to me is the fact that there's thirty-four shares of Platte Avenue lateral that come with this property. And so I think what you have in front of you is a total contract price at three point three two five million, which is within our negotiation parameters. And so tonight, I am looking for a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the contract to buy and sell the property and take care of all the closing documents that we'll need because they want to schedule the closing before the next council meeting. So that's why I'm in front of you tonight. So be happy to answer any questions. And before you ask, because I'm sure it'll come up, is that this will give us sixty-plus percent in the Platte Avenue lateral with this purchase and will potentially just leave us with two irrigators left in that entire system. So it gets us much closer to full control of that problem child, as I call it. So. If you haven't noticed, we have three current sinkholes in that system that we're going to have to address in the off irrigation system that right now we just have warning cones on, so. Continues to be a problem and just continues to be more of a problem every year, so.
The problem that just keeps giving.
It just keeps on giving. I'm sure the council in nineteen twenty-one thought they were doing a good thing, but.
Yeah. And if I could also clarify, the resolution gives a little bit of additional wiggle room. As Brent mentioned, we were working on this contract up till four thirty today, trying to get it all squared away. We haven't sent it back to the seller to get their comments. So there's still some negotiation and finalization of the contract itself, so that's the way the resolution is written, to make sure that there's still some authority to finalize the contract, given the timeline. We wanted to get it approved in advance and it should just be some minor technical issues. The big purchase price is already figured out, it's just the, you know, crossing our eyes or crossing our deeds, dotting our eyes.
That was accurate.
Your eyes do get crossed after reading these sometimes, but.
Lawyer humor.
Yes.
Okay. Any questions? If they're seeing none, I would entertain a resolution.
Your Honor, I would offer a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the contract to buy and sell real estate between the City of Fort Morgan and Fort Morgan Farms LLC.
Second.
Have a resolution by Lisa Northrup, a second by Dan Marler. Vote by roll call.
Resolution carries unanimously?
Thank you very much for that.
Thanks, Brennan. Next is an update and possible direction on salary survey and benefit surveys. Ms. Kirk.
Thank you, honorable mayor and counsel. I am here tonight to update you on the compensation plan analysis that has been conducted with the Employers Council to conduct a salary survey and ensure that our current salary and grade plans remain competitive so that we can attract the best employees. Some of the goals of the plan, as outlined in the council communication, I just wanted to reiterate that the market analysis is aged forward to January first. That's when we'd like to implement this plan. And one of the issues that was discussed the last time the comp plan was updated was to ensure that the plan was comparing the benchmarks of Colorado in the rural cost of living rather than the entire benchmarks of Colorado. So what you have before you in the pages, like the blue charts and the brown charts towards the back, those are actually jobs by salary grade at ninety percent of the benchmarks of Colorado. So that takes into consideration the rural cost of living, which is of course less than the geographical location in Colorado. The process, you have the process in your packet in the form of the compensation methodology report. We kind of talked about that last time I was before you, so I won't go much into that. But I wanted to let you know that we are recommending that you review this in a couple of different scenarios. The first one is the review, the cost to the implement, the actual plan itself, which is the blue pages and those. What we found with that part of the update, the salary grade plans were very, they were low due to the cost to implement it is actually lower than I would expect. And that's due to several factors working together. And one of the factors being that there's, over time, this last plan that was implemented, there was a one percent flat increase given each year as a bonus as part of the performance and merit piece. And that does not go towards the actual salary itself. So it was given in the form of a bonus and so it doesn't affect this salary as an accrual. I know that's kind of a confusing factor, but basically what that does is it kind of keeps, keeps us in tune with the rising costs of salaries year over year. Right now, salaries are increasing in Colorado at about a two point one percent rate. So the fact that a one percent flat bonus is given, it kind of takes it off the top of a salary and then the rest of the merit base is given in the form of an accrual or an hourly wage. The other part of this that has kind of been a surprise is the increasing of the entire salary grade year after year, which has been a practice here, has not let the plan sit static. And so it's kind of raised to each year with the cost of salaries and it's kept up with the times. So I found that the methodology that was here in place was working somehow, it's magic altogether. So from the recommendation standpoint, the implementation cost of the proposed structures is about thirty-five thousand dollars, seven hundred and fifty, yeah, thirty-five, seven fifty-one to put these structures in place and to bring those people into the salary arrangement. Our most out of line, I guess, part of this was the police. And basically what we've done is we've kind of redone some of the structuring in the police department to more adequately define places that the police can move into. The last structure had a police one through four category. This one has broken it out to one, police one, two, three, and four. So again, it gives them a better idea of how they can move within the range. The second part of this is we reviewed the salary compression. And the salary compression, what this structure doesn't address is the compression issues at the front end between the minimum and the midpoint of these ranges. So to that end, we presented a scenario to address the pay compression based on employees performing at satisfactory standards and length of service in the current position. So a lot of that scenario is developed and you can see that we looked at addressing the compression by giving increases based on length of service in the current position. And that will kind of spread out people within the range, get rid of that compression at the very beginning of the grades and also it presumes that the employees are performing at expectations. So to implement this part of the plan, it will cost about a hundred and fourteen thousand nine hundred and fifty-one dollars. And so the entire recommendation that I'm asking for is an approval of about a hundred and fifty thousand, seven hundred and two in adjustments. And that includes the new salary grade plan effective one one of twenty nineteen. And this will affect about seventy-five employees to be adjusted. For those employees who are not touched by this plan, normally a combination of the two percent merit and the one percent market, I would like to use that three percent towards a merit-based increase for the people who aren't touched by this. And that's about seventy-three employees who would be on continuation. And the reason why I'd like to move that over is we're not planning to adjust the market in twenty nineteen as the salary grade plan would be considered at market, so.
So there'll be no twenty nineteen market adjustment?
No, we wouldn't need one because this salary grade plan would be considered to be So I'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have. It's a lot.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Kirk at the moment?
If we were to approve this tonight, how would it be communicated to all the staff?
The implementation date will be as of January first, so we would start having meetings with all the employees to be held throughout the rest of the year. We would develop recruiting guidelines in HR to be able to recruit more effectively on this and HR would become a more active member in setting the salaries rather than, with, of course, the directors, to ensure that employees aren't being leapfrogged, meaning that they're passed in front of somebody else who might have been here longer or had less experience. And then to ensure that the salaries that are offered are traceable and defensible. And more effort is going to definitely be made to ensure that the educational and the certification raises that are given throughout the year are logical and fair and that these raises bring value, not only to the employee but to the city. And it'll really help map the career tracks and the succession planning of the city.
So we wouldn't actually be authorizing anything tonight? We were just giving you direction that would then be implemented into the final budget numbers, correct?
Correct.
It's very well done. I commend you on and the people that you work with. It's very thorough, very well thought out and, you know, takes into consideration one of the big issues I always see is you got to worry about that compression piece where, you know, you're not bringing somebody in above somebody who's been there for a while. And I think the City of Fort Morgan does a very fine job of making sure we're not, you know, those people aren't losing out, so.
Right. The ones that are here are our best asset.
Absolutely.
So it costs a lot of money in turnover.
Exactly.
To fill a position, so.
And I'd just like to commend Susan for all the work she's put into this. She's been working on this for months and working really hard on it. I've been involved in a few brain-damaging conference calls with Employers Council on this. And when we did the salary survey five or so years ago, it was a similarly difficult process. It turned out not to be perfect. This one surely will not be perfect either, but I think it's makes some major steps in the right direction, you know, to correct some of the flaws that existed in, you know, the first attempt we took at this. So, you know, I think it's really a great thing and she's worked really hard on it. And if you look at the numbers, if we just did the three percent, Susan and I were talking about this this afternoon, you know, the total that she's going to ask you for is going to be around two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars or something. And if we just did the three percent with an average salary of forty-five thousand dollars for, you know, the full-time employees we have, it'd be about two hundred. So it's not like, you know, you wouldn't be putting this money toward personnel anyway. It's not like the whole lump sum is an expenditure you wouldn't be making anyway, so. So thanks to Susan and her hard work on this.
So third time's a charm. After you do the next one five years from now, it'll be perfect?
It'll be closer.
No.
Third time's not the charm.
Third time's not the charm.
Compensation is never perfect.
It's a fluid, it's a fluid thing.
Does anybody have any questions for Ms. Kirk on this?
I think it's right on the mark.
I wanted to talk to you tonight about it.
I guess we're looking for general direction on proceeding with this plan. So are we getting that from the council?
Yes.
Okay.
Move forward.
Okay.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
I guess we'll see what the budget looks like after they've implemented these into it.
Right.
But that's a standard every year, you know?
It is.
Compensation increases are based upon, you know, revenue, so.
Thank you, Susan. Next is 2019 budget calendar, presentation of budget expenditures for the capital improvement fund and conservation trust. Mr. Brennan?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'm going to give this a shot without Jeanie. She's been on leave for cataract surgery. She'll be back tomorrow. I think maybe we'll start with the conservation trust because that's a little simpler. I think you have hard copies in your packets. What we're proposing this year for the conservation trust, we seem to have built up a substantial reserve in that fund. We get about $100,000 of lottery proceeds each year and has to be used on kind of outdoor projects or recreation-type things. So what we're proposing to do is spend down some of that reserve of, I think it's almost 500,000, over $500,000 now, and get the expenditures start on the bottom of the first page. For the golf course, a rough, a rough unit, that sounds like a mower of some kind to me. Paint for the pro shop, a light duty cart, and a core aerator. Then at the, in the parks department, add the bike park ramps and features to the new skate park, kind of get the BMX element back into that. Make some repairs and flooring in the, in the poolhouse, which I have not been there in a while, but I understand it's not in great shape. Soccer goals. Convert the library park to ADA accessible. Technically, I'm told by Ty that it is considered accessible because with this surface that it has, but one of the recommendations of the Trails Master Plan, I think, was to have it more accessible. And so they would do that one. Then a couple of mowers for the cemetery and the aerator and the duck ponds. And so that would be a total of $369,000. And that would be taking $264,000 worth of reserves in the conservation trust out of the over half a million dollars that we have, so roughly half reserve. So if the council is okay with that. We took some of the things that were on our main capital improvement budget list, wish list. We kind of start with a wish list and we moved as many as possible into conservation trusts to try and get those accomplished. And so there's quite a bit on that, on that plate this year.
Looks good.
So is everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Okay. Now the more difficult part. The way we did the capital improvement budget is I've given you two copies, one without any cuts and one with cuts. If we were to do everything that we would want to accomplish, which is listed under capital items 2019, about halfway down the front page there, we would be taking roughly $2,258,000 out of reserves. We have in the capital improvement fund about $4 million in reserves. There is an update to one of these things, and I don't know if Steve was going to allow me. No, he wants to come and say it himself because you can come in.
Well, I spoke to a few of you that I had the opportunity to see tonight at the park, but we got word late today that we did receive a grant from the Department of Local Affairs in the amount of $800,000 for the city complex design. We asked for a million, but they had a tough decision to fund a lot of good projects, but we're pretty excited to get 800,000. I do think with some scaling back of the project, we can easily obtain a full design for the entire complex for 1.6 million. So what the capital fund has in it is, as you see, is a million dollars in grant with a $2 million design. So we'll adjust that to be 800,000 in grant and 1.6 million for the expenditure of the design. It's a 50-50 match, so pretty excited to get that word today, so.
And thanks to Steve for driving forever to get, to make that presentation and get that $800,000 from DOLA. So there will be a little adjustment in these numbers already, but the other one with cuts, we've taken some things out of the list of 2019 capital items so that there would only be $158,000 taken out of reserves. And the council can choose to kind of give us direction to go one way or the other or anything in between, to be honest with you. What has been taken out in the one with cuts is $50,000 for electronic signs. Those are kind of the sort of digital signs that you see on highway projects for CDOT. We were going to get a couple of those for the city. 1.5 million dollars for the roads in Center Point Plaza to complete those. But those are, that's a council priority. The things that are in bold are in council's top five at least, and Center Point, I think, was like number three or even higher. And $50,000 for tennis court cleanup. That is up at the golf course behind Elaine's Place. We own the property back there. It's the old tennis courts and it's overgrown and kind of just wasted property. And Ty would like to have it kind of cleared out and leveled and made useful as a parking area and a way around to the driving range. So, correct me if I'm wrong on that, Ty?
Ty, you're good.
And the other thing that we have in there is $500,000 for residential development. And we put that in there mainly just as a, a way to jump on an opportunity if it presents itself. You know, we would, we could leave it in reserves and if something came up, come to the council with a budget adjustment to try and, you know, react to it. Or we could appropriate it. And, you know, I don't know, nobody really knows what form that might, might take in terms of incentives or partnerships or whatever that might be able to contribute to residential development. But that's a very high council priority and for the entire community, so we thought we would put that in there and hope for the best. So does anybody have any questions about how this is presented or what we're proposing?
Yes. I'm sorry, it's past my bedtime. So I'm trying to understand this. So what we want to spend is almost $9 million, but what we have money to spend is only 6 million, 6.8 million, is that right?
Right.
And so we have a list of things that we would like, but we don't have money for. And then we have a list of things that are prioritized that, that we should, that will keep us in budget. Am I understanding that correctly?
Well, we have a list of things. The one that's labeled in the upper left-hand corner, no cuts, is everything we would like to do. And the number on the upper section, just below, or just above the total at 2.258 million dollars, that transfer from other funds, that would be from reserves. That would be what we would be taking out of reserves to make all that on the list happen. The one labeled with cuts, we are not, well, we're, it's down at the bottom on this one, I guess, the way it was drawn up, but the, all we would be taking out of reserves is $150,000.
And is it correct? So the 2.2 is actually 2.2 minus 800,000?
Uh, no, the 2 million is, oh, the strictly for streets one?
No, for the grant.
Yeah, that is going to be, on the upper part, it's going to be 800,000 instead of a million for the grant revenue. And then on the bottom part...
Oh, so we already had that in there?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. So that will go down and so will the expenditure for the design for the city campus. Instead of being $2 million, that'll be 1.6.
I was kind of hoping that 800,000 wasn't in here at all and we were just...
Yeah.
But, so.
So, so why would we, I guess, why would we spend $2 million out of reserves for these projects? We just spent about, or we just approved about $3 million coming out of reserves and we've spent other money coming out of reserves. Why, why should, why should we even entertain the idea of spending $2 million out of reserves?
Well, that's a good question. Some of these things are required, like the airport apron project, the strictly for streets, we're going to spend that money. That's, you know, kind of dictated by the, the sales tax measure that we passed and the 900,000 that we also agreed to continue to... North State Street is a property that's going to be developed and doesn't have the infrastructure to accommodate that development yet.
That's the street improvements?
Yeah.
In North State?
Yeah. It's, well, it's North State Street construction. Street improvements, that's the 900,000 that goes with the strictly for streets that we promised we would continue to budget if they approved the tax. But North State Street is, it's only a few blocks, but...
I guess my concern is, I mean, there's lots of good projects to do. But if we continue to spend out our reserves, we're, you know, it's only going to be a year or two and we won't have any.
Right. Well, and that's why we're asking, you know, it's the council's decision. You know, you can take $150,000 out of reserves. We can, you know, scale things back. And so that's, that's why we're asking you, you know, as I said, we kind of start with a wish list. So we gave you what the whole wish list is. If you're not comfortable taking that money out of reserves, we're fine with doing the with cuts version. Or if there's any particular projects that you'd like to keep in there and find some in-between, half medium.
I kind of like the residential development side of, of things to be part of the with cuts. Leave it in there. I mean, housing is phenomenal of importance to the community.
But isn't it something...
It's a little ambiguous, you know? We don't know what we're going to spend it on. It would be nice to have it available if an opportunity arose and, you know, we'll, we're certainly trying to create opportunities too, but we, we can't say what we would spend that on. So I can understand, you know, your concern with, with that.
To me, that's, that's a very ambiguous thing that, I get that it needs to be in the budget and if it's not in the budget and we need to spend it, we have to do a budget adjustment. But we can do a budget adjustment as opposed to putting an ambiguous $500,000 out there to use on what, an undefined thing. That, that one may, I, I get that that's one of our council priorities in housing. I'm not downplaying that housing is important, but without having a tangible, this is what we're going to do with this money.
No, I completely understand.
So the 1.5 for Center Point Roads, that's everything as far as road, streets, gutters?
I don't think it's everything. It's, what we're doing, what we're bidding this year, I think, is Saunders to Beaver and then Beaver over to Linda. It's kind of a reverse L as you're looking at a map of the property. I think this 1.5 would complete Saunders down to Railroad.
And I thought we had already approved that money.
Which, for the reverse L for?
For the streets in Center Point, Center Point Plaza.
We did. We approved, we have 2.5 million dollars in the budget for it this year. And the engineer's estimates came back at like 3.7.
And didn't we already approve that?
But that's...
You approved that last year as part of the budget, but the bids came in a lot higher, so we're not going to be able to do everything we had hoped. So we're going to be bidding it in probably options. So, yeah, the, the 2.5 million dollars is not going to put all the roads in.
Right. I understand there's the 2.5 million dollars that, that was in the budget for this year. I get that. Didn't we like two or four weeks ago just approve an additional increase based on the engineer's estimates and guesses?
Yes.
Okay.
But just for the reverse L and the work on Platte Avenue.
So this is in addition to the three, the total 3.8 million that we've already approved? So now we're talking about an additional 1.5 million?
The entire Center Point Plaza, if you built all of the roads as they're designed, the, the big X and the highway work, it's $7 million. So this gets Saunders down to Railroad built next year.
Which is a...
Saunders is a big...
It, it seems like a huge amount of money until you take into consideration that North State Street is a little itty-bitty tiny road.
One block.
And that's five, that's a block and a half and that's 500,000.
I know, but I've been hearing that one mile of road is a million bucks.
Yeah, that number.
That's a rebuild.
That's to, that's to overlay road, not to build.
That's overlay road. That's not to build it up from the ground up.
Yeah.
Right.
So what are we talking about? Like a quarter mile costs a million bucks? I mean, what are we?
Depends on...
Saunders to Railroad.
You probably can't put a number on that. It's, it's whatever the market bears.
Go back to Beaver.
I mean, when it comes right down to it, it's whatever you put it out to bid and it's whatever they come back with with the bid. I mean, you can't really, I don't think you can put a number on it because it's...
Well, you can get a general number. I mean, you can have an idea and that's kind of what I, what I was functioning under was about a million dollars a mile and now...
For, for maintenance, but...
For maintenance.
Yeah, to build all of Center Point is, is over $7 million.
Man, I just don't remember talking about $7 million to finish out, finish out Center Point Plaza.
Well, I don't think we knew at that time. We were guessing, apparently with the 2.5 million, we thought that would build the whole cross and, and a roundabout to boot, but that's not happening.
These are engineer estimates too, so.
It's expensive to build roads.
Yeah, it could be $5 lower.
He wants it to be $5 less and then it's okay.
I'm just kind of feeling overwhelmed. I mean, we're spending all of our reserves here. We were anticipating to finish out Center Point Plaza about 2.5 million dollars and now we're talking $7 million. And in two more months, are we going to be at $9 million? I mean, I'm kind of...
Welcome to government finance.
Well, I'm feeling a little hoodwinked.
Yes, I, I, I think it's, it's un, you can do your best and you can guess at what it's going to cost. But it's like, it's like you take, you go personally in to have repairs done on your house and you think it's going to be $10,000 to get your roof repaired. Well, everybody else got hail damage. So, you know, now what should have cost $10,000 now costs $20,000 because that's what the market will bear.
Well, believe me, I understand construction, but, but from 2.5 to 7? I'm not, I'm just saying I'm surprised at the difference and I'm not sure how to deal with that as we move forward on this. be down the road? I mean, to, to really...
It'll be a...
Invest into the infrastructure of the business community, it's, it's a lot.
So it sounds to me like the capital improvement one will have to come back and...
I think...
Talk, are you wanting to review it and bring it back?
Not necessarily. I, I guess I'm just voicing some surprise. I think Councilmember Anderson wanted to say something, was about to say something.
I just think it's, it's not going to get any cheaper, and I get the whole 7 million dollars sounds like a big number. It is. However, if we split this up and over time, I mean, the more we develop, you look at that, we can develop the land, and then that's going to increase, you know, we can't predict what's going to happen, but no business is going to move into that area until there is a road. And if you build it, they will come, they say. So if...
That was a base.
Sorry. But I'm just saying, we, I, I get it, like, it is shocking, but we have to do something or it just sits and waits. And we have some money, so let's start, and then we'll see what, take it piece by piece. We're not writing a 7 million dollar check tonight, but, you know, we'll chunk it up, and we'll see what happens, right?
And hopefully, I think where you're going with that is, once you get those roads and you get development in there, once you get development in there, you backfill those reserves out of sales tax revenue.
Well, our, to that, then, I guess I would say, we need to make sure that we are backfilling that reserve and not just continuing to spend on good projects, but before we know it, we have no reserve left.
It's also, to me, it's all...
We need to be cautious, is what I'm saying.
It's always dangerous, that's, that's that fine balance between, do you hoard the money in reserves and not grow, or do you grow and you take the risk of spending some of the reserves down to, for the ultimate end game? And I'm with you, I get that, that's a big number, you know? But I, I just think we have come this far with it, and to not continue to budget that out, to me feels like it would be short sighted, and it would put everything we've done up to this point kind of at a waste, because if you can do part of a road, that's great, but if you can't get out to 34, you know, nobody's, if you can't get into there off of 34, nobody's going to want to do that. And we'll, we'll...
And I completely understand Councilmember Marler's trepidation about this, and we, we're not being, I, I don't think reckless or not paying attention to our reserves. I think we always budget conservatively, and we always, it's unfortunate that Jeannie isn't here to be able to kind of give us a sense of how much we put back into reserves every year, because I wouldn't be surprised if we put this 2 million back in reserves after this year is over. We, we always come, a lot of things come in under budget, you know, pickup trucks or, you know, projects, the, you know, the engineer's estimate may turn out to be a little high, and the bids may come in lower to build the reverse L for the first half, and all that that we don't spend, that we budgeted, goes back into reserves. So we're constantly kind of backfilling those reserves, and it's not, it's not a situation where it's kind of a finite amount, and we're just taking it out, and it's never coming back. So, you know, I don't know if that gives you any reassurance or not, but that's our approach, and that's why we have very healthy reserves to begin with. We have very healthy reserves in the general fund, and, you know, the city's in, in good financial shape. So I don't think we're, you know, proposing anything that would be dangerous to us. It looks like Jason has something he's...
I was just going to say, perhaps at the next meeting, having a report that just shows over the last 10 years how much money has gone back in reserves every year over that timeframe to kind of give a context of how much money's going into the savings account? Because what you hear is, we're taking money out of reserves for this project or that project. What you don't often see is, you know, 2015 was a great sales tax year, 2014, I don't know. I'm not the finance person, I don't speak for the finance department.
They say it's fun.
It is fun.
Not when Jeannie's not here, it's not.
But, you know, when we were having record sales tax year, you know, it wouldn't be far off to say that we put a million and a half to reserves, into reserves that year alone.
I think that would be useful information to have.
You'd sleep better, huh?
I would sleep better when we're...
We can do that.
Pulling money out of reserves for all of these wonderful projects, but, you know, that's why the, the federal government's in trouble, is there's lots of good things to fund, and...
But they use it, they use it or lose it.
And the federal government runs in a constant deficit as opposed to us balancing every year.
We don't have that option.
Can, can you get that data for us?
I can.
Thank you.
And if you do it right, I bet you Jeannie will be here, and she can explain it.
She is supposed to be back tomorrow, and, and she can have the fun.
She can have the fun back.
Okay, so I guess on, on this one, we'll kind of push it off to the next meeting, bring it back with some more information, and maybe a more coherent presentation from Jeannie.
You did a fine job, though. It's not that you didn't do a fine job on this, it's just that, that big number kind of...
Right, I understand.
That's very, if it had been a little number, you'd have been good.
Yeah, well, there's a little number there too.
That's good information.
So what you're looking for direction wise next time is that, because we could come back and say, we don't want no cuts or with cuts, we want to slide this one over, and I mean...
Right, yeah, you can make whatever adjustments you want, you can make it balanced, you can take money out of reserves or not. We can make it balanced and bring it back balanced for you somehow. Fun part.
Fun lady to go back to make that happen.
But, yeah, we'll start with bringing back a, I don't know if it'll be 10 years, but say, whatever we can do, five or 10 years, how much money has been put back into reserves at the end of the year when we end up with more revenue than expenses? And then we'll have this discussion again.
Can we get a little bit more, the electronic signs? I'm not completely sure I understand that. That doesn't have to be explained tonight, but if you could get more information on that.
Yeah, it's just, you know, those orange signs with the little light bulbs that spell, it's like the one near Wiggins that says, you know, that's a big one, but, yeah, I'll get a picture or something.
Maybe we should have a picture of that one?
It's like the, the four by eight billboard signs that say, expect road closures between these dates, and...
Right.
Oh, the Scottish.
You can go program it to say different things.
I don't need pictures now. I'm good. Whatever they are, they're very expensive.
Isn't that fun, Mr. Brennan?
I am done.
He's done with his fun.
I apologize to Councilmember Marler for causing him nightmares after his bedtime.
That's just a bonus.
Next is public comment or audience participation for items not on the agenda.
I didn't want to participate.
Going, going, gone?
Sold.
Reports by officials and staff.
A couple of things to report. I, I know several of the directors have things to report, and I think Steve will cover the paving. The park closure signs have arrived, and so we'll be working on getting those put up in the next week or two, and then begin enforcement of that, the park hours. And included in your table files was a very encouraging sales tax report for June, highest ever, and, you know, obviously that's because of the new 1%, but it was still percentage wise higher, so that was welcome to see. And next up is Brent.
Okay.
Hi, Brent.
So I'm proposing that we put about 5 million dollars back in reserves in the 2019 budget.
Okay, we don't need to keep putting that back in.
This is unfortunately just part of the water budget. We've had some discussions with Northern Water about the pump project that we had slated for construction next year, and it's going to get pushed back to 2020. So we will make that adjustment in the final budget, but that'll be close to 5 million dollars getting pushed back into reserves out of the budget.
All right. You now have 5 million dollars, John.
I know. When the conversation started, I was all like, I'm coming up to the podium.
But remember, we can't use his money, though.
Yeah, I know.
It's a total setup.
That's all great and fine, but we can't use that.
And then on top of that, we finally adopted the 2019 NIS budget at yesterday's NIS participants meeting, and we are looking at being able to reduce our participation next year by about a half a million dollars. So instead of 1.3 million, we're down to eight, a little over 800,000. So we'll make that adjustment in the final budgets that you guys see in October.
800,000 dollars will go back into reserves.
Yes, it'll go back into reserves.
But we still can't use it.
Yeah, Water Enterprise reserves. So, on the NIS project, I think probably most of you did see, we have got a final environmental impact statement, which is huge news for our project. Very excited about that. I will probably try to bring, they're having a 45 day comment period through October 4th for the Corps of Engineers as they wait to see if there's any additional things. I will probably try to bring something back in the way of a resolution or a letter for Ron to sign, or something to put towards the Corps and showing the city's support for this project, but we've got a few meetings between now and then to get that done. But very exciting time now that that's done. That usually means, timing wise, that we're probably right at a year, less than a year away from getting a record of decision. And once you have the record of decision, your 404 permit, your 401 permit, and everything with the Corps is approved, and we're basically are ready to look at starting to build a project. So it's only taken us a little under 15 years to get here, but we're finally there, so, but...
In our lifetime.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's good.
I believe there's a copy of the...
Yes, if you want to read the 1,440 pages, there's a copy of it at the library.
For review.
For your review.
Did you give us the click notes?
And so, we're doing a lot to protect the environment, and making sure that this project is environmentally sound, and is therefore a project that can be moved forward by the Corps of Engineers without any threat or endangerment of environmental issues.
Excellent. Good for those trees.
Yes, so, that's all I've got. Thank you very much.
Let's see if Steve can follow that up with more good news.
It, it won't be that exciting, but I am happy to report that the strictly for streets paving part of the project is complete. We've paved Barlow Road, 8th Avenue, Railroad Avenue, Ming and Gale, and they're all awesome. If you've not driven them all, I would encourage you to do so. We have a full width street on Ming, which is very exciting. Yeah, there is a little bit of work to do with some utilities. We've got to raise the water valves, manholes, those types of things. And the chip seal portion of strictly for streets is scheduled to start August 17th. We're having a preconstruct meeting on that next week, so I'll have detailed information about that. Should take a couple of days, but this is just to put some chip seal down on portions of Riverview, Cheyenne, and, I forget the other street, forgive me, but where? Yeah, 7th. So we're pretty excited to have that complete, and I think if everything comes in right, I should put about 150,000 back into reserve.
How we still can't use it, we can use your money, right?
We initially estimated a little bit extra because we weren't sure what things we might find on the paving in particular, and I think we've saved a little money there, so hopefully we'll have a little bit in, in savings from what we estimated, so.
But we still can't use.
Well, yeah.
Just for streets.
But drive the streets, they look great, and I've, I've been up and down all of them, and I think the paving contractor did a great job. We're going to apply for some awards through the Colorado Asphalt Pavement Association, and hopefully we can get something this year, so that's it for me. Thanks.
If it just hadn't rained...
Right.
And shoved dirt out of the alleys onto the beautiful 8th Avenue, you know, it would have been amazing, but no, the rain pushed the dirt...
We're working on that too.
It looks great, it drives great.
I'd like to thank the citizens for passing that strictly for streets. This summer I've been riding my bike a lot more, which puts you closer to the street, and I realized how poor a lot of our streets really are and everything. So I'm just tickled pink that we're going to be able to have a funding and a plan so that we can get this all brought up to something that isn't threatening.
Yeah, we're already, we're already planning next year's project, so we're pretty excited.
Just ride up and down 8th Avenue.
Yeah. Or Railroad, or Barlow.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Steve?
Mayor City Council, I wish I had something for the reserve, but I don't, but I do have good news. A couple of announcements I think the community would like to hear. We are joining a program called a Safe Deal Zone, and this is a program that, there is an actual website where you can do safe transactions in police stations. So if somebody is on Craigslist, they want to buy something, or there is perhaps a change of custody of children, and they want to do this at a safe location during business hours, we are now participating. We are the only city from this point east in Colorado that is participating. So there's a website that our citizens can go to, can see that, that this is prominently displayed in our front door, and they can do their transaction in the lobby of the police station, their legal transaction.
Legal transaction.
Make that perfectly clear. Also on...
Yeah, actually, illegal would be great, because, you know, then we got, you know, people ready to take care of it.
I do wish they might have changed the wording a little, Safe Deal Zone, something a little bit less...
Yeah.
I don't, I don't even know the right word for that at this point. Anyway, we are also hosting a tip a cop event for Friday, August 17th, at the Country Stakeout. Police officers, five of our officers, including myself, we will be wearing aprons and hats, and we will be not serving anything hot, but we'll be pouring water, and the tips that the officers get will go towards Special Olympics, and specifically for our Special Olympians here in Fort Morgan. So we're honored to do that, and that'll be between 5:00 PM and 9:00 PM at Country Stakeout, and we hope people will join us there and tip appropriately for such a good cause.
And the date again?
I'm sorry, that would be Friday, August 17th.
That'll be, we'll get that out on the social media.
At the Country Stakeout, 5:00 to 9:00 PM. We have a citizen police academy that we are also asking people who might be interested in what the police do to attend, and it starts September 10th, Monday night, through November 12th, every Monday night, 7:00 PM to 9:00 PM. It will be held at the police department. There's no charge for this, we do this every year, and we're hoping for a good turnout, educate the community on what we do, how we do it, and this type of thing. So if someone is interested in that, please contact us, and we will be glad to reserve a spot. And the last news item I have, we talked a little about it last council, about staffing in the police department, but we've had some updates that we're kind of proud to report. We are again, and still at full staffing, every position is filled. We are one step away from hiring our first paid intern, which we're very excited about, a young lady who's 18 years old. As she progresses through the testing and completes it, I'm hoping to introduce her to the council. She is almost complete, and I'll be glad to report one that is done. And the last piece of good news connected with staffing is we've had two officers who in the past have left the department that have indicated they want to come back. So we're not only attracting local people, but people who are moving here, but we've had some people who have left who now have called us and saying, I may have made a rash decision, can I come back? So that's good news, and I wanted to share that with you. Thank you.
How do you, how do you think tonight went?
I think it went very well. I, I'm happy with how the National Night Out event went. Weather cooperated, and we had a very good display, and thank you all for attending. Thank you.
Thanks, Paul.
Anybody else?
You want to say some more, Susan?
No.
No, you're fine. Bids, meetings, and announcement, Ms. Dunn.
We're accepting sealed bids for construction of the Fort Morgan SH-52 curb ramps project, which is the federal aid project number TAP M470... which is the federal aid project number TAP M470-01120666 up to 3:30 PM on August 30th. And that's all for bids. As far as next meetings, August 9th at 4 o'clock is a historic preservation board meeting at City Hall. August 20th at 4:30 is a library advisory board meeting at the museum community room and then August 21st is the next regular city council meeting here at 6 o'clock.
Next is an executive session for discussions of a personnel matter under CRS Section 24-6-4024F, not involving any specific employees who have requested discussion of a matter in open session, any members of this body or any elected official, the appointment of any person to fill an office of this body or of an elected official, or personnel policies that do not require the decision or the decision of matters personnel to particular employees. And the following additional details are provided for identification purposes, city manager position. I would entertain a motion to go into executive session.
Second.
Have a motion by Lisa Northrup, a second by Allison Howe, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, we will go to executive session.